Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome all of you and if we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Pride of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, municipal, liberty, and special service.
Can we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Jessup.
Here.
Councilmember Whitten.
I'm here.
Councilmember Conover.
Present.
Councilmember Graham.
Here.
Councilmember Larson.
Here.
Councilmember Rebus.
Here.
Seven to zero.
Thank you. Approval of minutes, please.
Don't move.
Motion on the floor that has a second for the approval of April 25th, 2017 council meeting minutes. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Whitten.
Yes.
Councilmember Conover.
Yes.
And Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Councilmember Bozek.
Yes.
Councilmember Rebus.
Yes.
And Councilmember Jessup.
Yes. Your first reading, please.
Notice the taxideries proposed additional appropriations. Notice to clarify given the nature of Porter County, Indiana, that the proper legal officers of Porter County will leave the Porter County Government Administration Building at 155 Indiana Avenue, Valparaiso, on June 26, 2017, at 5:30 p.m. to consider the following additional appropriations in the course of the county budgets for the year 2017 and to transact any further requests by the council. General fund and sheriff's salary reduction of $55,000, $55,000. Animal shelter salary, $55,000, $55,000. ICS consultant by 9/31/20, $20,000. Measurement fund, $1172, $700,000. Animal control fund, $4,009. Overtime, a reduction of $4,200. Uniforms and clothing, a reduction of $1,009.30. And other supplies, reduction of $25,000. Public safety data tax fund, $49.7. Data processing equipment, $12,535. Fire art training, $88,000. Court interpretative rights, $91,000. $2,000 in taxes. The hearing at such meetings shall have the right to be heard thereon. The additional appropriations are filed and made will be referred to the Indiana Department of Government Finance. The DLGF will make a written determination order to petition for your plan to support the appropriations made within 15 days and receive a straight fight copy of the actions taken from the State Department or Porter County published June 16, 2017.
Thank you.
Mike, can I make a suggestion or a request?
Sure.
Seems like, looking out in the room, there might be quite a few people here for the library board and trustees appointment. Could we handle that out of order and out of the gate?
I think that certainly works for me. Any objections to that? Okay, so we have a library board, trustees board appointment to make tonight. The citizens appointment, and we have had, we have two applicants for that particular position. Certainly appreciate the interest in the position and having an opportunity to look at the qualifications and experiences of the people involved, and also appreciate the interest that we've gotten from people who have voiced their opinion on who they feel would be the best candidate for that particular, that particular role. So, the interest is great, and as we have these appointments, they are important, important for us to do, and we appreciate everyone's involvement. So, with that, can I have a motion, please?
Yes, I would like to nominate Kevin Matthew Pazor for the citizen appointment.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion on the floor that has a second to appoint Kevin Matthew Pazor for that public library board and trustees position. Any discussion?
I'd just like to say very quickly that another Deb Porter also applied for reappointment, and I think that Deb's done a fine job, actually, and I appreciate the time she's put into it. Also, Kevin has taken the time to come out and meet with me, and I appreciate that very much, Kevin, and we've talked a little bit about some of his visions for the library system, and I think Kevin has certainly proven his abilities with what he's done at the museum, so I appreciate the two. I'd like to thank Deb for her service, and I would like to certainly, if it sounds like maybe Kevin's the, are going to be our appointment, encourage him to follow through with those, those thoughts and visions.
Any additional discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Councilmember Conover.
Yes.
Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Councilmember Bozek.
Yes.
Councilmember Rebus.
Yes.
Councilmember Jessup.
Yes.
And Councilmember Whitten.
Yes.
Seven to zero.
Congratulations to Kevin.
Thank you. Condolences, Kevin.
Okay. Getting back to the, the order of business for tonight, it's a pleasure to have all three county commissioners here with us, along with attorney Scott McClure, to discuss the much anticipated Porter County capital upgrade plan. It's, it's obvious that there's been a lot of interest surrounding this plan. The council is, is anxious to hear, to hear the plan, and also knowing that as, as we go through, as we go through the presentation, and as we have an opportunity after, after tonight to further discuss the different components of the plan and communicate with the commissioners, we look forward to hearing what that, what that plan is. What I have heard in my communication with the, with the commissioner's office is there are no Ferris wheels in the plan, and it's been reiterated that there are things that need to be maintained or need to be repaired, and things that, in a, in a very comprehensive way, they've addressed significant needs throughout, throughout the county. So, I appreciate that comprehensive nature of the plan. I appreciate also the, the opportunity that we're going to have as a council to, to contribute to it. So, as long as there's not roller coasters or merry-go-rounds and/or Ferris wheels, we are very, very excited to hear about what I would view as maybe the first things first plan, in terms of things that need to be done. So, with that, I'd like to-
I'd like to say a few words, too, if you don't mind, since we're currently going to do that. Couple things. Why, as, as we kind of move through this plan, and I, and I have an idea of what's, what's in it, I've, I've had the opportunity to meet with Commissioner Blaney, and I've had the opportunity to speak with Commissioner Biggs, so I'm speaking with both of them, who, certainly both of them called me back, so I appreciate that. It seems like the commissioners have listened to some of the requests of the council and some of our joint meetings and some of our discussions and some of our, our planning, you know, going back and forth, that some of the things that we need to see. It seems to me that as a preliminary thing for the council, this plan is, and I'll let them have four in a second, but this plan certainly addresses some of the fix what we have first, and kind of get our house in order, and then, then we move on to some of those things that might be extra. One thought that I would like the council to consider as we move through this, not so much with just the plan, I mean, is, as we hear this and we hear some of the, the costs I haven't added yet, but I'm betting it's going to be north of 25 million, maybe 30, to do everything in the plan, we're going to be faced with the task of deciding how and in what manner we're going to fund that, if in fact that is the number. There'll be two possibilities, I think, and we should be thinking about this as we hear the plan. One, of course, would be the potential of floating bond, perhaps a revenue bond, for lack of a better term, off of our foundation earnings. The other would be to budget for the plan over a period of years. The only thing that I would caution the council as we move through this and think about those two things, is that if we budget for out of our, I want us to consider a contingency. I know the commissioners have thought about this, because I've heard, I've heard this sort of coming down the pike a little bit, but if we're going to fund against the foundation earnings to, to pay for a bond, the good news is we'll get all this stuff sooner. The bad news is we are banking against good years from our foundation investments consistently. Meaning that, to refresh everybody's memory on the numbers, that's really our job, if we were to budget what we've got in our hospital interest for foundation earnings, and we were to budget the sheriff's pension, which we have to deal with, we're probably going to be north of 3.5, 3.7 million against the foundation earnings each year. Last year, in a good year, a solid year, we earned about 6.2 million. So, I don't know, I haven't looked at the bond, if that's the direction we're going and made preview of those meetings, but that's got to be 1.7, 1.8 million a year to pay that bond payment. So, we're, we truly are, we have to have a contingency plan for those years that, if we're going to contemplate a bond, for those years that we don't have a good year. And that's going to involve either banking against the 7 million or whatever's left in that principal that we have sitting there, which will require a 10-0 vote, or digging into the principal. So, let's, I want us to consider that as we're considering the timing of all of this. So, I just wanted to talk about the numbers. Thank you, Mike. Appreciate it.
Great, great consideration, great comments. What I'd like to do at this point is turn it over to the commissioners, and what I'd suggest for the council members, I think we have a copy of the presentation in front of us, allow the commissioners to present the plan that they have before us, and at the, and hold questions until the end. So, as we're going through it, if you have questions, comments you'd like to make, jot them down, and then we'll all have an opportunity to voice, voice our, our comments at the end.
Sure.
Welcome. Thanks for being here, and we're anxious to hear.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, members of the council. First of all, this is a capital upgrade plan. We've been working on this for probably eight or nine months. Right after the first year, we had a few surprises, so it took us a little bit longer to bear through all those things. But moving into the PowerPoint now, we're going to talk about the planning priorities, which basically, basically, a lot of these projects that you'll see coming before in front of you were, were ideas, plans that we came up with. They've been rated based on seriousness. That's why we keep talking about there's no Ferris wheels. These are things that, you know, if we move on to the next page, that these are, we're addressing needs, we're not addressing wants, and, and that's real important as we go through this presentation. We are also trying to anticipate the future space needs of the county. As you'll see in this presentation, a lot of this stuff has not been addressed in the last 25, 30 years. Our goal and, and our responsibility up here is to look out into the future and see where the county's going to be in the next 25 to 30 years. So, a lot of that has been fought into as we move forward on, on the space plannings. The next thing is we, we anticipate doing this based on Councilman Whitten's conversations. We, you know, our plan that we'll present in front of you really shouldn't be any tax increases, because we're going to be doing this using funds from the foundation or however we go about it, but that's the whole goal here, is that we're not going to be raising anybody's taxes to do this. And we're also, in the same breath, we want to try to preserve the foundation's assets, too. So, that plan would be thought, that is all part of this plan as well, too, is to preserve that foundation asset. And as we get into it, now we're getting into the actual proposed projects. As you'll see, we have some bridges that had come up right after the first year. Those were some of the surprises that we got when we reorganized our highway department. We found there were three bridges in the county that needed to be addressed immediately. Our bridge, bridge fund is pretty well depleted right now, so this causes real serious issues on short-term in how we fix these things. So, of that proposed projects, there's 2.5 million in bridges. The admin plaza out front, we have a, an estimate of around $1 million. We have Expo Center in there at $5 million renovation. The North County complex at $10 million. The downtown courthouse at $5 million, and then we have 157 North Franklin, which is the old jail, and we'll be talking about that as an acquisition target in a, in a, in a product finish-out budget of around $6 million. And those are going to be the projects. As we get into each project, we'll have the narrative as to how we came about this and how we qualified and quantified, how we got there. So, hopefully, I think it will be in a fashion where I think we can bring everybody along and let you into why we're thinking what we're thinking. So, with that, we'll move to the bridges. The first bridge is Bridge 126. It is, it is, the Bridge 126 is at 700 northeast of State Road 149 over Salt Creek. That's in Portage Township. This bridge, we'll have a limited access time to be able to, to work on it, because it passes over a trout and salmon tributary, which is Salt Creek. So, based on the federal government, we can only be working in that area for certain periods of time, so we're tied with time-sensitive factor there, because it's in Salt Creek. But as you can see, Bridge 126, it was originally built in 1970, and it's never been reconstructed. I think there's an also, another slide, you'll see the sufficiency rating is 8.2. A perfect bridge is 100. So, you'll see where 8.2 is pretty far below standard, and as you can see, there's a lot of work that needs to be done with this bridge. The next bridge is Bridge 84. This is 800 southwest of Hebron over Cobb's Creek. That's in Boone Township. Again, the bridge was originally built in 1930. It was reconstructed in 1964, which was 34 years later, and I think you can all do the math, we're well over 34 years now for this bridge. Again, it needs to be totally reconstructed. It has a sufficiency rating of 19.6 out of that 100 scale. So, again, very low efficiency rating, sufficiency rating, I should say. The third and final bridge is Bridge 135. That's Old Porter Road West of State Road 49. Again, that goes over Salt Creek, too. That's in the city of Portage. Originally built in 1970, and the building, the bridge has never been reconstructed. And as you can see underneath, it has a sufficiency rating of around 33.5. When we did a visual inspection, there's falling concrete, there's rebar sticking out of the bridge, not a very pretty picture up there. Just for the county's, the council's information, when we found these bridges out, immediately what we did was we lowered the, the weight limit on those bridges immediately, so they've already been taken care of, the signs have been posted, and we're limiting the amount of traffic that can go over those bridges. So, we think we've done everything that we could possibly do to mitigate the liability, but it, it needed to be addressed in, in a sufficient way. So, so basically, we have Bridge 126, which is a total replacement, Bridge 84, which is a total replacement, and Bridge 135, which is a rehabilitation. So, that is the scope of what we're looking at for the bridges. I think if the council remembers, several years ago, the commissioners raised the rate for the, the bridge fund. At the time, when we doubled it, at the time, we were the lowest in the state of Indiana. Now, I believe we're the second lowest in the state of Indiana, and we're considering talking about raising that rate again to try and get that bridge fund up to where we can start taking care of the number of bridges that we have. For all of you that don't know, Porter County, that road and bridge fund, that bridge fund is really there to take care of about 126 bridges in this county. That's a lot of bridges, and the reason we have a lot of bridges is because we're so close to Lake Michigan. So, you know, one of the nice things about being located near Lake Michigan, this is one of the liabilities that goes along with it. But there's a lot of bridges that we maintain and take care of, and it's, it's a big job. So, that's it on Project 1 for the bridges. Numbers-
So, you said that, and I know we're not supposed to ask questions now, but I'm going to. So, you have, we have three bridges that we've identified as high priority.
Mm-hmm.
How many would you characterize that would be just behind that? Do we have a lot of bridges that you think, we think are going to get there, or we think we're pretty-
It steps up pretty good in the sufficiency rating. That's where we think if we take that rate up one more time on that bridge fund, we think that we'll have the money going forward to take care of those issues. Plus, also, it's a good, it's a very good question, because we are also tackling and looking and re-engineering the way we've been taking care of our bridges in the past. And we're going to be looking at doing more of this, some of this work ourselves. We're going to be doing some other things that we feel that can be done at a lower cost to the county. Some of the bigger bridges, obviously, we won't be able to do that with, because that gets beyond our area of expertise, but we feel that we can tackle some of these smaller bridges and do a lot of this work ourselves, which will save us money going forward.
That's good.
So, I hope that answers your question.
It certainly does. Thank you.
Next is the project administration. The plaza out front, just to move to it real quickly, it's not ADA-friendly. It's a trip hazard liability. We have concrete tumbling. It's high maintenance, and it's aesthetically challenged.
And it looks like a crime scene.
Yeah. No chalk on the ground yet. If you move to the side of the room.
Let's see how this goes.
Yeah, right. Out front, this is the design that we worked with American Structure Point on. What, what this, what this does allow is, you know, when we, when the commissioner sat down and met with the team to try and design a concept, what we're trying to do is create more seating out front, which is the areas with the trees. Those are all buildup areas that will allow for seating. We have some landscape area. We have an area up front that if we ever want to do any type of displays or anything. The sidewalk in the middle is probably the big thing. Right now, we have a, a series of steps to get from the outer street area up to the front of our building. We're going to be getting rid of all that, and we'll be going with one continuous ramp that is ADA. That's a 112 slope. It's about 10 feet wide. It will have steel railings on both sides that will be lit from underneath. We've also bid out as an alternate, we can decide whether we want to do it or not, but we've also bid out an alternate to put underground heat under that sidewalk, too, to where we can continually maintain, keeping that walkway, which is the center access to our building, keep it heated, keep the snow off it in the winter months, to where it's going to be a little bit easier to keep it clean and clear.
Is that a big, is that-
It was, yeah, I have that number right here.
It is.
It's 124,000 as a breakout. So, it's costly. It's costly, but we need to, that was some of the things we broke out in here that we can talk about as we get a little bit further into it. So, we have the snowmelt ramp. There'll also be all new lighting on the building. We also have the irrigation system in the building, which actually, we are going to be doing an underground irrigation system, where we'll be putting a tank in underground up front, and we'll, we'll be capturing all of our rainwater at the building, and we'll actually be using that rainwater to sprinkle our plants and water our plants in there. So, we're trying to keep it sustainable to where we can use our own water source. It will be tied into the municipal system, but it will have a float on it, and when that tank gets too low, we can fill it up. But the whole goal here is to try and work off our own groundwater, you know, within, within our building footprint. That, that separate price is right around $32,000 to do that separately. So, you know, that's pretty much what we're looking at out front. Obviously, we still have the flagpoles. There's also a little theater area up in the front there that you, that's hard to see, but it creates sort of like a little seating area if you want to, you know, we have a lot of kids that come here to the rotunda and do things. Well, now, we sort of have a, a neat little area outside where they can gather in a, a little step area to, to sort of use that outside more.
So, I mean, me and Biggs want to play cannon or something.
Yeah, right there's where you go.
I have a question.
Sure.
So, in other, in other words, the entrance to this is right in the center. You don't have anything on the left over here where people park? You're doing away with that one handicapped spot now?
You mean all the, all the parking along the street? Is that what you're saying?
Well, yeah, but then along where do the-
That all stays.
Yeah, the parking stays, I understand, but then they have to, I'm thinking of-
I think she's asking, she's, okay. She's asking about this ramp over here.
Each one of these are open, right? To the road?
I think I-
Those go on.
Oh, those are open?
Yes.
So, it's like it's-
Those are all like halfways in there.
Then, that's, that answers my question.
Oh, okay. We also feel, too, that the city of Valparaiso have done a lot of nice things down in this area, and we feel this is just a small continuation of what they've done. Plus, I think it also makes the building present itself a lot better, too. And plus, it's, you know, we have an ADA issue here that we need to fix as well, too. So, and it, it was a little tricky to, to make that happen, but, so that is the admin It's, it has an ADA compliant ramp, lighted handrails, underground heating system, if we so choose to do it, irrigation using stormwater runoff, lighting for security and aesthetics, low-maintenance landscaping, and those are the, you know, sort of the, the main points that we're trying to accomplish here with the plaza. To let, the commissioner, we feel that with it, next week, I believe, the construction documents will be final. We have instructed Structure Point to do an RFP and to get it, and to bid it, and to get it out there in the process. We get some numbers back to where we can see what this thing really comes in at. The numbers that I've given you so far are just cost estimates from our architect, but we want to get some hard numbers. In order to start this project this year, the time is running up against us really hard, because there's a ton of concrete work in, in this job. So, we're continually moving on the track to, to, to push on this thing. You know, we'll, we'll figure out the logistics of the money if we decide to go forward with this later, but I wanted to let you folks know that it's still in the works, and we want to come up with a hard number here real quick, so then we can pin that number down. Next is the Expo Center. It was built in 1984, never renovated. It's, it's really no longer a viable competitor for top-tier food and beverage events. We've had a lot of issues with mechanical systems out there. They're failing, they're inadequate. We have ADA issues in our bathrooms out there. A lot of the fire protection equipment is so old that they don't even have a lot of the parts to fix it anymore. Same to do with a lot of the mechanical systems. They're so old that a lot of those parts and things that are out there aren't even hardly made anymore. So, usually, when something does fail out there, it's a big number to fix it, and it's usually going to be a short-term fix, not a long-term fix. And that's something that we have been struggling with up here for quite some time. The staff out there does a great job holding it together, but it's, time has definitely taken its toll. So, what we'll be looking at there is the entrance, the lobby, the interior of the Expo Center, the bathrooms, obviously, will need to be a total rework. Carpet. You can see the exterior, the building, the paint, painting and chipping, peeling. Interior lighting is inadequate. Those are skylights that were painted over about 15 years ago. We have cracked windows, just about in every window out there. The exterior wall separation, there's your HVAC system. So, the scope of work is pretty large out there, and obviously, because you're in a lot of square footage, it's, it's a big area. It's a big building. So, that's pretty much, any questions on the Expo Center?
Well, no, it's clear they've been band-aiding that thing for quite some time, so it seems like it's time to polish that thing, as they say.
And we've had some discussions with some architects and some contractors, trying to get an idea of what a renovation like this would cost. There's been no money spent on designs or architects or anything at this point, because we didn't want to get too far out over our skis before we talked to you folks. So, this is, you know, if we were to say yes on this a week from now, we'd have to start from scratch. So, just letting everybody know the timing of that. Some of these projects, we've pushed a little forward, some of the smaller ones, some of the larger ones, we were waiting for guidance. Okay? Commissioner?
Are you presenting these in order of importance?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
That's a big question. I think I have one.
You got one? And, and by, by saying that, I mean in- And by saying that, I mean in building condition.
Okay.
Okay, so, I mean.
Thanks for that clarification.
Yeah. So, Project Four is the North County complex. It was built in 1979, structurally sound. We had a report from American Structure Point that went in and looked at this building and that's what they came back and advised us. In walking through the building myself, a lot of the mechanical systems and a lot of the plumbing systems and structural systems are in very good shape. They've been taken care of very well. So the bones of the building is very good. They're very, very good shape. We didn't feel that, you know, why we're putting this project forward is existing, sort of a rehab it in an addition. We felt that the building was in such good shape that we could add on to it and we felt it would be much more economical to go that way. What you have in front of you now is the existing building layout as it sort of sits today. We have not done any layouts for different rooms or anything. We call this in the architectural world program, space programming. So this is sort of color-coded right now. If this were to move forward, obviously, we would have to get into the nuts and bolts of the different layouts and space that has to go with that. So currently up there, we have, the health department is off-site. We have insufficient office space, insufficient storage space, limited voting and meeting space. We have prisoner security issues, court staff security issues, public access security issues, and it's also not fully ADA compliant either.
Other than that, it's sound.
Other than that, it's sound. No kidding. Yeah. What this next slide shows you for future plans is sort of how we would, how we would handle this renovation addition in a way to where it would address all those needs. As you can see, we were adding another courtroom. We're bringing the health department back in to our space. We've created a secured parking area and a Sallyport for the sheriff and for the folks that work up there and for the protection of the judges and any court staff. We currently do not have that up there right now. So basically, you would drive in through a gate, prisoner drop-off, the amount of prisoner storage or prison, place where we put, that's not storage, but.
Well, that's.
Yeah. It's, yeah, it's very small and it's not very safe and it's not very adequate and sort of lockup for the prisoners while they're in court. So we see that area increasing in space quite a bit. We would bring the health department back in. You know, we would take a look at all those areas. The only other, you know, the assessor, the clerk, the prosecutor, all of those spaces we've taken a look at and they would be redesigned and reallocated. Again, adding the third court and then the other thing we felt was putting a community room in this building up there for early voting and also just to have as a community room for anybody that wishes to use it up there.
And it seems to me, Jeff.
Yeah, and it's a total rehab of every other thing in there too.
And not to, yeah, not to digress, but I think that, I know there was a lot of discussion from the folks up in Portage about, you know, if we were going to construct a new building, they wanted it in what they characterize as the new downtown hub, but I thought, two things. One is, when speaking with the state, it seems like they're not really encouraging multi-story court buildings. They're encouraging, because of security reasons, more of a sprawling. And I don't think what Portage was suggesting would accommodate that.
Correct.
So it seemed like even if we were to really completely construct a new one, it'd have to be the same site anyway, right?
And the other thing too is we had our consultants give us some cost allocations if we were to build on that site. And right now, it's around $16 million plus, that's not even the parking garage, and we feel that the parking garage would probably be another $3 to $4 million. So as you can see, that site, now you're almost doubling the cost as to what we're wanting to do here and it starts to become a little more economically challenged from that standpoint.
I think we kind of figured that, which is probably going to be the case.
You're adding another court?
Correct. And the reason for that, Councilman, Councilwoman Graham is that.
Sorry, Graham. Mr. Good.
I'm trying to be, I'm trying to be.
You're doing great.
So, yeah. When we, Scott McClure had called down from state court.
We're currently behind according to judicial services after the new weighted case load. We're about point, about a half a judge behind. We haven't added another judge.
That doesn't mean that our judges aren't up to full speed. You're not saying that we're a half a judge.
No, I'm saying their case loads are a little, their case loads are a little higher than what the state's making sure. And so the idea being that, we haven't added another court since DO 6 was added. That's probably been roughly more than 20 years ago, so we're only growing. So at the end of the day, to do, we're going to do a capital project plan that's supposed to be lasting 10, 20 years. You don't do it without adding a court.
Yeah. We did, we did look all that up. So we're also looking at where we're in compliance with the state as well. So again, as you look at this space, this is pretty much programming. It's not final yet. There might be some tweaks to some different things, but this is far as we've allowed our consultant to move at this time before we got into any other drawings or anything else. We wanted to get the blessing from the council first, so.
And then why don't you talk a little bit about the security?
Yeah. Go ahead, Scott, because you're.
The way, the other interesting thing that the consultants were told is that we wanted to be able to have early voting in here, that's others' community room, that can be devoted to it when it's that time of the year. And then also, if you look at the security, it's actually around the bend. So you can get in, do early voting, even go to the assessor's office over there, go to the health department without going all the way through security so you don't have to take your cell phone, don't have to continually send everybody back to the car to then come back and do that stuff. Now, once they get past that security portion, then it would be, now you'd have to be in full compliance with whatever the security would be.
So the early voting would not go through security?
No.
Correct.
They'd go right in that community center or community room and be able to do early voting and not have to.
So who let you vote or tampering, something like that? There won't be any passing guards in the way?
Just add another door. The other thing that I didn't talk about on here too, here's a little bit better slide, is that we're redesigning and upgrading an existing 19,500 square foot building and we're constructing a 15,000 square foot addition. So this is pretty much getting us right around that 35,000 square foot size of the building.
And what is the acreage? We have quite a bit out there, but how much is going to be?
Well, current, that's a very good question. Currently, right now, we have American Structure Point analyzing the amount of parking and space that we need out there because, as you point out, there's some land that's available up on the front. And we feel that maybe once we get this done and we, because the whole parking lot's going to be repaved, new lighting, new landscaping, so we're thinking that there's a couple pieces of property up along Willow Creek Road that I think the county could either consider, you know, selling or doing something with, but it, I think by upgrading this building, it will create value up front. And then at that point in time, we have another decision to make possibly, or maybe we don't do anything with it.
It's open.
Exactly. This will also bring us into ADA compliance as well. I think I mentioned that already, so. The compli, and the big thing that we're going to do here, and we have spoken with the sitting judges up in the North County courthouse there, is that we're going to try to accomplish all this while maintaining the operation of the building going forward. And it can be done. And by adding the third courtroom, we'll be able to do one courtroom and then move them into there and then finish that courtroom and move them over there and then the third one will do last and that'll be the bonus room. So.
And the magistrate?
Yeah, and the magistrate, they have a need up there for that. And keep in mind too, these courtrooms will also be increased in size as to what they are too, because they're very small for that matter. So, so I think we've.
And then again, just if anyone misses, all of the space, it's not just an addition. All of the space would be remodeled and brought up into something more current and then that would be the way that the ADA would be developed. Counter height, the bathrooms, all of that. So the, not an addition, it's leaving the original.
Are they going to be able to use the building while this construction is going on?
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Yep.
Because otherwise, that would be a real problem.
Yeah, that would.
Well, that was one of the problems when we started looking at this, is how do we, how do we, you know, how do we do this? I mean, the only other alternative would be building a brand-new building and then moving over and, and, you know, building courthouses today is an expensive proposition. It's right around $400 to $500 a square foot. And there's a lot of new homeland security requirements and other things that make these buildings very costly. The nice thing about this is we're going to get pretty much a whole new building, 35,000 square feet. We don't have an elevator in it, which is really nice for a lot of reasons. So, so we moved to Project Five and that's our beloved courthouse building. I think everybody knows and sits up here is, this is sort of the building that identifies Porter County. At least I feel that way. It's a treasure. It needs to be taken care of. It's, in a lot of ways, it's who we are. And as we go through, there's a lot of HVAC and roof issues at this building. We have inadequate electrical systems. The windows have failed throughout. We have water damage throughout. We have worn carpet and tired carpet. We have some potential foundation issues that we need to dig into. There's a old stone foundation, if you've not been down there. It's old. We have insufficient storage space in the building, insufficient office space in the building, and insufficient courtroom space in the building as well too. And we've, you know, so now we have some slides that show our inadequate electrical systems, our failed windows. And again, I, you know, we're not, we're not trying to create shock and awe here with anybody. That was part of the presentation, is that we really wanted to let you folks know really what's going on out there.
Well, and none of this stuff is hidden. You walk in the building, these aren't in the back rooms.
Yeah.
So you see them.
The water damage throughout, carpet worn, water damage throughout. The basement, we have some foundation issues there that we're going to be digging into and the insufficient storage space that's in the building. One of the biggest problems that we have with this building, as we started looking at how to go combating, how to fix it, is the only way that you can fix the problem is you have to move stuff out of the room to fix it. And right now, we have no place to put anything. It is really, you know, 10 pounds of flour in a two-pound bag is what we got up there.
And I think some of these files, we have to keep some of these files, Scott, for like 99 years.
Yes.
Yeah. Can't microfish them and destroy them.
The state legislature hasn't caught up with whether or not we can scan them, save them that way. I mean, they've still kind of, most of these are still sitting kind of in a special classification.
What kind of things are in the 99 file stuff?
All the old marriage records.
No offense, though.
I mean, there's, I wouldn't be able, I wouldn't be able to list them off for you right now. I just know that that's, at the end of the day, not only do you have to deal with the, how long do you keep the stuff, but then somebody's got to go down there and decide what this stuff is compared to that stuff and how long this has to stay and how long that has to stay.
Got you.
And I'd also like to point out, we have a lot of that also that's housed out in the basement of the center district garage as well too, which you can hardly get down in there to see anything as well too. So, you know, we're storing records that are valuable records in basements of 40-year-old buildings that haven't been maintained right. So to a certain extent, we're sort of asking for trouble here.
Will this renovation of the Portage complex, will that give us any more storage?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And that's part of the programming we need to go through with the different departments and everything as we go through the space planning. And I think that, you know, we want to relocate some record storage. We want to relocate some offices. We want to add an additional courtroom here. As you know, the current prosecutor's space is nears Judge Alexa's space and it's basically set up for the size and space to put another courtroom in there.
And so is the probation department also, we do another potential location.
Will any of these bring the, I know the, currently, we rent from Chuck Williams, I think, 4D. Will any of these bring us out of?
This is Project Number Six.
That's a great lean-in. Great segue.
So, yeah, when you said, are you proposing to move the prosecutor completely out of the building?
No, we're saying that, I mean, potentially, they could go to this Project Six, but ultimately there's enough space, either at probation or at the prosecutor's office, that you could put another court in either area.
Move one of them out and add.
And then add that extra court space because we may need to be, once the building's tight, we may have to go in and start doing significant remodels floor by floor.
This, this plan, and you're going to hear the final component here, this plan is basically for the old courthouse and the new building on, that we want to talk about at length here. What we plan on doing is moving just about everything out of that building other than the courts. And what the courts really want is small clerk's office, some meeting rooms for trials and other things. And we, you know, we've overused this building for too long and it's a very historical building.
And we have foot traffic.
And it has a tremendous amount of foot traffic. And what we're doing is we're peeling that back and we're lightening the load of this building so it will be here a lot longer. And I think that is, I think that's the main driver behind a lot of what we're talking about here, is to protect that asset.
The top of that building, used to be a little more to it?
Yeah.
Please, that's that rough.
Is there, they used to, wasn't there a top tower?
There was a, there was some of the towers. It's been a long time.
Yeah. Yeah, I messaged you the photos.
Don't be telling me how we got it.
Being the center of the county and a star of the building, does it cross your guys' mind to maybe putting it back, adding on to that topic? Do you really?
The commissioner's actually looked at that back in the early 90s and at that time, the price tag to do that was well over $300. So. The long and the short of it, not in this plan so far. No fairytale.
No, that's a fairytale.
I don't know if it's fairytale, but.
Jeremy, I'm, Jeremy, I'm shaking.
You arguing for stuff in Valvo and not Portage.
Guys, just make sure it's waterproof.
Well, and that's what, and that's what the plan is.
I'm sure that's in there, Sylvia.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we can't even, we can't even power wash in Tuck Point right now because the windows are sizzled. And when we tried it, the whole basement flooded out. So we can't do anything on the exterior of that building until we fix the window problem and some of the smaller short roofs and things that are tucked in back behind that limestone. But there's going to be some tuck pointings, some cleaning. There's a lot of that that needs to be done up there.
Maybe Kevin, you can put together a kind of fundraiser, restore the top tower.
All over. It's going to be a long night.
Thank you.
I had to leave him there for you.
So then Project Six is 157 Franklin. We all know it as the old jail.
Yep.
It's actually 216 steps and 150 seconds from the courthouse. It's a building that's very close in proximity.
Did you do that or Scott walk that?
He's down for us. It would be me to be a lot quicker than that.
Because he'd be driving.
That's right.
I'm just making sure.
What are you doing?
Yeah, okay. This is, this building is 27,265 square feet. Just so everyone knows, before we started investigating this building, we went out in our back courtyard here, we dimensioned the open area out up there. If we were to build three stories there, with the footprint that we have available, we're only probably going to get to about 14,000 square feet. And plus, the construction methods would have to mirror the construction methods of this building, so the costs go up quite a bit. We're thinking it was probably right in the, right around $8, $9 million to duplicate that out here in the courthouse. So we, and it also puts us about two to three blocks away. We're thinking it was probably right in the, right around $8, $9 million to duplicate that out here in the courthouse. So, we, and it also puts us about two to three blocks away from the judicial part of moving all the other offices over here, which we felt was a little too inconvenient from that perspective. So, we did look into that. We felt that this would accomplish what we need in a much quicker fashion, because it's already built. And we can take you through the building. It's four stories plus a basement.
I don't mean to cut you off.
Sure.
Do you think we need 27,000 square feet? I mean, you're saying that this would only add 14,000 by building, adding on to the building.
Convenient. It's a convenient 27,000 square feet, I guess, as we say.
And I think he's also saying it would cost more to.
Right.
We didn't, I guess, it's not that we don't need, we don't, that that goes, that limit's out in the 40s.
Unless I can't.
Because of the size of 40 yards available to go up.
I mean, that's a large building.
Mm-hmm.
He maintained everything.
Yep. If you go over there in the basement, there's a ton of record storage in that basement. The basement is bone-dry. It's ideal for computer IT, for record storage. You can also see that the building, the gentleman that own it now is a company out of Munster. We've met with the folks several times. They've put a new roof on the building. They bought new air conditioning units. It's been all new fire protection put in, new elevators put in. Basically, all that would be required of us if we were to move forward on this would be the tenant finish, would be to do the build-out.
And I understand they have that, this is a crazy question, but they have that, currently have that restaurant in there, right?
Correct.
Well, that's, I assume that wouldn't stay there, or would it?
The current discussions that we had is if we buy the building, they would go away. Because that's their restaurant, too.
Oh, yeah.
So they own that restaurant as well, too. So as you can see, we have pictures here ready for interior build-out. It would serve as a transitional space during the courthouse renovation. So as we're renovating and moving stuff out, it would also help us to transition the renovation space. Here's where we get into some of the things we'd like to do. This isn't all final, but one of the things we would like to do is to move 911 to the top floor and build out a new space for 911 up on top. It would, building constructed to withstand storms, antenna already in place, it frees up space at the jail building, which I know the sheriff needs some meeting spaces and other things out there, so it would accomplish some things for him as well. We have record storage in basement, relieve space storage at the courthouse again, and potential additional storage from the admin center. We would also assess moving other non-court offices from the courthouse. We believe it would relieve a lot of office space shortage at the courthouse. We would assess moving non-core government offices from the admin center, relieve pressure on space needs at admin center, and allow for growth here as well, too. The scope of the work is we would have to acquire the property. We would determine the build-out transitional space required during the courthouse renovation, and we would build out spaces for 911 and record storage, build out spaces for other offices to be relocated. Yes.
What is the cost to purchase that?
Well, that's something that we're going to talk about here shortly because it's not, that's fine. It's a good question. That's what I would be asking, too. The other thing that we have included in this space is a large community room as well on the first floor. And we also feel that this would make a great spot for early voting, to where we would have the space needed to handle early voting, the way that our voters' registration, I think, would like it to handle. I know we've had some issues in the past with trying to find the right place for that. This, I think, would solve that problem, we hope.
Can we keep it out of the courthouse or this building?
Right.
It causes other security issues, parking issues.
There's been issues with voters' registration and pass by location.
I've just heard. I've just heard. So, what, to get into, do we want to address the, why can't, why don't you address Sylvia's question now on where we're at with the purchase of the building?
The reason why I can't answer how much of the cost is because I can't do it that way. Ultimately, I would need a resolution from the council to say that I'm able to go and get a couple of appraisals pursuant to the statute. And then, once I get those appraisals, the most I could offer would be the average of the two of them together. That's why we're not sure, you know, what that would turn out to be and whether or not the current owners would be willing to entertain whatever that number would be. So I think one thing that I think we would be asking for tonight would be the ability to at least get the appraisal so that we can come back and tell you it's, it can or can't happen, and then this is the number, kind of like with the front. Get the number actually nailed down, and then that way you guys have a hard number in front of you to decide what to do with.
Is that building currently listed for sale?
No.
Okay.
Yeah. So then, that way, we could do it. If we, if you guys were inclined to entertain that resolution, it would also have one of the key provisions in it would be that obviously, any offer to purchase would be contingent upon coming back there and getting your guys' final blood.
Yep.
So this isn't, this is, I'm literally trying to be able to plug a number in and see whether or not this will succeed.
But there's been some casual diat, like with the owner?
We have.
They're not going to read about this in the papers.
No, they know. They know. They know. We've gone through it. We've, we've had at least two or three discussions with them. Very, very nice, family-run business, and you deal with the family, we deal with the, and it's been, been good so far.
Yep.
And in addition to all the better for example, Jeff, we're talking about the way it's based needs and operation. The building that was called Chuck Williams, Chuck Williams, that's no one's building, but the prosecutor's office, right now, that cost us nearly $90,000 a year, and that goes away.
Wonderful.
So, yeah, that would, that would be space off.
We get out of that lease, you're saying?
The lease is, uh.
Coming up.
It's either the end of '18 or end of '19.
Who owns that now?
I'd have to look. I obviously have the contract or the lease itself, but, so that would go away in 4D if it's going to move to this area also.
Let's get to the money. Yeah, there you go. The total estimated plan cost is right around $30 million. That's including bond reserve and fees. Financing, we would look at a general obligation bond, estimated rate of around 3%. Estimated annual payments around 1.7 to 1.9 million a year. Right now, rate.
I was right on.
Yep. Right, three, I think, you know, we're making, I think the foundation's making around 4.5%, 5% a year.
Better.
By five, five and a half, six, maybe, but, you know, if we, if we can bond against that and only pay 3% or 3.25% while we're making five average, we're money ahead, and we've protected the corpus. So, that's pretty much, the only other jail, the only other bond obligation that this county has is the jail construction bond, which expires in 2020. So I think the good thing about all this to celebrate is that this county doesn't have a lot of debt.
Right.
Which, which is a good thing, and I think, just, you know, I think Lake County, Lake County, Indiana, is right around 130 million debt that they have over there in Lake County. So, just, just as a comparison guideline, I'm just using it for that only.
What's left on the jail bond?
Um.
I'd have to get a payoff, but it's, no, it's more than that. I mean, our payment, our last year payments are significant, but they're going to be expiring in the middle of the short term.
Vicki, what's our, yeah, tell us our numbers.
We just paid the next bond payment, so excluding that payment that we do July 1st, it's just over 18 million that we have left to pay.
That was a good guess on the two.
I appreciate your fact check.
What's that a year we're paying on that, Vicki?
Just under 2.9 million.
Okay. Then, and so, you know, the best, the rest of it, you can read through. It's probably semantics. It's things that we would all need to work through as how we would, we would pay that bond payment. I think Councilman Witten alluded to that earlier, something we would all need to work through. But again, just to recap, we're addressing needs, not wants, and, you know, we're trying to anticipate the future needs, no tax increases, and preserve the foundation asset. And that's pretty much our story, and we're sticking to it.
So I think that, if I could just jump in here real quick. So a couple of things. One is, I mean, it's, other than the, the new jail, our old jail building, this is kind of exactly what I expected, so that's good. And I kind of figured we were more than three bridges deep, so that's good news, too. I was guessing four. So that's cool. And I, and I'm, my comments aren't designed to say that I'm opposed to bonding. My comments are designed to say that we need to, when we do this, we need to have a contingency in those years that we might not have sufficient funds to protect the corpus. And also, I think that it might be a great opportunity as we move through the foundation, and I won't be here tomorrow, but there's been a lot of discussion. We had a, one committee meeting that Jeremy was quite fond of, and one of the suggestions was that we create a budget for the foundation, and maybe this would be something that we could, we could have discussions about that as part of the foundation budget, you know?
And I think, are you referring to like some sort of foundation, rainy day fund?
Yes.
Is that who you're referring to?
Yes.
If one of the ideas kicked around was having.
So we build up.
Two, three, or four times what are anticipated earnings.
Right.
Kind of on the sidelines for what years you're talking about.
Yeah, because we have some weird, strange, odd year, and, and like the capital cities told us, you could have a year where your earnings are zero. I mean, we don't want to be sitting on a six or $7 million need and have no money. And we do have, like I said, we do have money sitting in our hospital principal that we preserve what's left of the 10, and we were keeping that intact, then that would be certainly a good year plus contingency. So that would be good. But it would be nice if we had a couple of years set aside, because those cycles sometimes are a couple of years, you know, when you have catastrophes in the market.
Agreed.
Just a thought.
I passed out, if you guys would entertain it. It is the resolution I was referring to. Again, it allows me to follow the statute, get the appraisals. You can see on the therefore, the last line, any offer to purchase could be contingent upon council appropriation of funds for purchase. This wouldn't allow us to buy it. We would have to come back. We obviously don't have the money in any of the budgets that we have to buy it. So ultimately, this would allow us to get a number. One, step one of that number would be, are we in a position to be able to purchase it? I mean, meaning, would the current owners be willing to sell it to us for whatever that average is? That's an unknown at this point. And number two, if they are, what is that number to give to you guys, so you guys can make the decision?
Scott, I would just like to ask, take this for what it's worth, but if you're going to present us with a resolution, it sure would be swell to have it before we get to our meeting.
I understand. I understand.
But I get it. I know what you're wanting to do here, and I don't have a problem with a resolution. Quite frankly, I'll make a motion to approve it.
And what I'd like to do, rather than in advance of that, is because we still have some questions, I assume, from some of the council members that have been waiting patiently.
I have a motion on the floor, Mr. Chairman, and there's been a second.
Motion on the floor, seconded to.
To approve the resolution.
To approve the resolution that's in front of us. Any discussion? You didn't read it.
I just did.
I did.
I know, I know the statute.
Quite truthfully, this isn't, this isn't the final thing. This just gives them permission to go ahead and get a price, so it'll come back to it.
Yes.
Any additional discussion?
Yeah, any other questions from any of the other members?
I just want to get this out of the way.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any additional questions on the resolution? Any comments? If not, roll call, please.
Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Councilmember Bozick.
Yes.
Councilmember Reavis.
Yes.
Councilmember Jessen.
Yes.
Councilmember Witten.
Yes.
And Councilmember Conover.
Yes.
Seven to zero.
Thank you.
So this really sounds like a great, I mean, listen, guys, this, we've had lots of conversations, and I know that there's been, there's been, you know, there's some thought out there that this is the double secret plan, and quite frankly, we've had lots of discussions about this. And you and I, Jeff, have had conversations, and I know we share the thought that we want to get our affairs in order before we start moving. And this is exactly, I texted Laura and said, this is my guess. And I think, other than the jail, I was, I was, the old jail I was on. So I think it's a great opportunity to fix it, what we need to fix up and put some people to work.
Yeah, and we, and just so the board knows, you know, the memorial opera house, you know, there's things on here that we all wanted from the commissioner's standpoint, but what it got down to is needs first. And, but I can give you, you know, the memorial opera house is working through a federal grant right now for them to give us a plan on how to renovate and upgrade that. We have some IT infrastructure needs in this county that are daunting. We're, we're going to continue to mine this, these things, and as we get them together that makes sense, we'll be bringing them in front of you and talking to you about it.
Well, and I told them at the opera house that if ticket sales go down, I'm willing to get back. I can tell them, I'm really living those glory days.
George, you have control of the individual mic.
Thank you, Jeremy.
It's a great powerful, I was just buying photos up. Now, it's not surprising to me that Dan was able to guesstimate this with his wizard gridding.
They're talking to them.
The very powerful laws. What I would like to do at this point is to redirect a bit and ask the fellow council members if they have any additional questions or specific comments that they'd like to make regarding the presentation of the questions.
I guess I just wanted to say that I think this building, and Jim, Commissioner Biggs, you could probably correct me, aren't we in here 20 years now?
Yes, we moved in here in 2000, I had a part in 2003.
This building relieved congestion at the courthouse.
Excuse me, 93.
Yeah, 20 years ago. And.
Is that when you first took office, too?
I did, yes, too.
So with that said, it's, we built this building for the future, and the future is now.
Yes.
And this is taking us 20 years down the road.
And I'd also like to add, yes, for those of us who were around at the time, or those who.
I think you're the only one, Jeff.
No, I'm here with them.
Yeah, when the hospital was sold in 2009, you talk about the money, investing money to saturate and be a game changer for a county. And I challenge anybody that if they can show me anywhere in this country that where the local government is taking on a capital improvement project with $30 million and not using property taxes or income taxes, that's a game changer.
As I've said before, Jim, we are living in the most solvent county in the state of the year, so we need to give the folks a little something to see.
I just think, without question, the principle is that it's smart, it is, it does change a lot of things here for our future, and at the end of the day, it serves for us, so.
And I would also like to add, from the board of commissioners' point of view, is that this, these projects that we've put together, it's a lot of work. It's going to be a lot of work for this board, who's part-time, as you folks are. And so, you know, we're biting off a big chunk here to take on, so it's going to be a lot of work. And we learned that just by doing the animal shelter, and that's just one project, and it's, it's a lot of work. So, we're, we're ready for the challenge.
I'm, I'm really happy that you have the bridges out in front for safety. I mean, that, it's really, you say these bridges are marked right now.
Yes.
They're all made.
There's weight.
Yep.
McClure has to take the long way to get through.
The traffic, the traffic count happens. It's not traffic, it's the type of traffic we're allowing.
McLaren has to take the long way to get through.
The traffic, the traffic count happens. It's not traffic, it's the type of traffic we're allowing.
Well, hopefully, we won't have too many more bridges.
But it's not surprising that the two, you know, east of where the bridge is, you have the one in South County that was actually destroyed back in 1930, and then you have the two in Forts Township, which is right outside our large city, huge traffic count, and they have been touched since 1970, so not so bad.
Is the 8.2 sufficiency standard going to, like, should we not drive over it? Does it scare you? It sounds really low.
That's why we've reduced the weight limits on them to as low as we can get them at this point, and that's frankly why they're the first project on this list.
Good question, Andy. I have the same.
I want to take my kids over there.
Yeah.
What about school buses?
No, it's-
Oh, my goodness, okay.
There's a couple more ticks down that sufficiency rating before we start getting into that.
And the other thing is, at our last Commissioners' meeting, we've moved forward on letting the contracts. It was, it was actually, just for the council's information, we had been using a consulting engineering company that has oversaw our bridge program for many years, and they are now no longer with the county. We've taken that out and RFE'd it, and we just came back in, and we now have a new bridge engineering firm that we're going to be using with. And these three bridges were actually bid out independently, and will actually have three independent bridge engineering companies doing work on these three bridges to expedite the timeframe to get them done. So we went out to the market, we saw a lot of good interest, and I think we're going to reap the benefits of at least that consulting portion of the work. So I think everybody knows that we're out there looking for the best buck, so.
Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, I appreciate you guys doing this. Sat on this council for a few years, and sat next to Councilman Biggs, we've asked for this plan for quite some time, that we know what we're getting into, we know what we're budgeting at. The seed at money, your guys' commissioners' budget is just picking away at things and not getting anything done.
Yeah.
We've asked, we've asked for this for a while, and I appreciate you guys doing this. Another thing, you know, we need to do it. We need to take care of what we got. $30 million is a lot of money.
Yep.
Only thing that I ask is that, for two years, you guys have been given a responsible bidder ordinance, that if we're going to spend $30 million, any money, that we should, we should make sure that we have responsible bidders in this county bidding on this, that we know what we're getting, that there's a trained workforce out there, that there's a drug-free workforce out there, that these people don't have violations in their past. There's every other municipality around here and county that's had these responsible ordinance. If you read the newspaper, look around in some of these developments, there's, there's a lot of unscrupulous contractors out there that are paying people cash, and as a county, as a government entity that spends money, there's nothing worse than somebody that's paying cash than what we're using taxpayer dollars and if they're not paying taxes. And it's out there all over the place. We have to make sure that we're hiring contractors that are doing the right thing, that are paying taxes, that are hiring the right people. So I would ask that, you know, this has been, I know it's been given to all of you guys, that this is, this is taken serious as we move forward with this.
We have been meeting with Tom Fraley, and on our next Commissioners' meeting in July, they will be on the agenda giving a 15-minute PowerPoint presentation, and we have been talking to them already about this, so we're right in the wheelhouse, and we hear what you're saying.
Thank you.
That's, that's been part of your contracts the whole past, right, Jeff? I mean, some of the larger contracts, you guys have used RBOs on.
Well, the animal shelter really is the only project that we have to sort of go back and point a finger at, and that was all, that actually, we weren't part of the responsible bidder ordinance, but what we did was take a lot of the best practices and put that in the programming for the animal shelter, and that's, I think, why we got what we got out there, is a very well-built building with a good contractor, is regionally based. So, yeah, we see that, we hear that, we've actually been talking and meeting with them, so we've been proactive on this. But again, it was all contingent upon getting in front of you folks first, and getting your guidance and then moving on from there.
We actually have a very interested party in the audience today. I'm glad to hear that, so. He's a 531 rep, so he's pretty, that was something that, we've had a lot of conversation, I think you and I spoke about it before, so I think that's-
Hear you loud and clear.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other comments or questions for the Commissioners at this point?
That jail purchase, that's an excellent building, and I understand why you guys want to get it. We definitely have a shortage of space, I mean, we know that for a fact. Is there a plan to do all the build-out at once, I think? Is there phases that you guys talked about? I mean, I think that was a question that we were asked about 14,000 square feet of initial building here. Do we need to finish that entire project at onset?
I, yeah, that's a great question, Jeff. I see happening there is if we can somehow consummate a transaction with these folks and take possession of that building, I think that would probably, I think what would need to happen there is we would probably want to then form some type of committee between the council and us to start ferreting through a lot of those decisions and who we're going to move and who we're not going to move, and are there any, you know, I think that we didn't want to get too far out over our skis, because I know how the rumor mill works around here. Next thing you know, people think they're moving out of their office tomorrow.
Or we're building, we're building a dome on the courthouse.
Yeah, or something like that. So, no, I think that that's something that we're going to take. We've had informal discussions in-house, but they've not been quantitative, and that's what we need to get to, but we need to get, you know, I think some of these projects, if we get moving on, we're going to be forming some committees, and we're going to be going at these things, very similar to how we did the animal shelter. We didn't feel it was necessary to form those committees yet, because we really didn't want to get too far into this and waste everybody's time until we sort of let you know the direction that we were heading in. So I think now that we get there, the heavy lifting, there's still a lot of heavy lifting left, so, and we'll need all hands on deck.
Well, I was just, I was just looking at your dollar figures. That seemed about the most reasonable of all purchases on the square footage cost.
If we can get it for that.
Right.
And that's what we're, that's why we need to get out there and cross this off the list here, one way or the other.
I'm sorry, that $5 million is the purchase price only, or is that-
No, that's purchase and build.
That was just a thought, okay, but it didn't really go out with it.
Okay, thank you.
For clarification purposes, we know the health department currently is not, are we leasing space for the health department of the Portage-
In Portage, yes.
And are we also leasing space for the prosecutor's office here in Alpo?
Correct.
Are there any other leased spaces that we have throughout the county that we're hopefully going to be able to eliminate?
Not, not at this time, not that we're aware of. Not that we're aware of.
Yeah, that's a good answer.
One other question, since Jim remembers when this building first was occupied, do we know what our census currently, what it was then and what we are now as far as usage? Do we have an idea where we are on building-wise, percentage of people that are occupying these buildings?
Are you judging them from the population of the county or from employees themselves?
Both.
There has to be somewhere between 25,000 to 30,000 more people in the county today during the month.
So we're still, the reason I ask that is we're still operating like 20 years ago, and that's ridiculous to think that we're serving 20,000 to 30,000 more people in the same facility that we have over 20 years ago.
I think they said that they built it for growth, that's-
And that's why we missed one year.
Right.
But unlike, unlike 91 or 92, the data that we're receiving, the builders association and IR, you know, the most houses sold in North County in Indiana out of the three counties was here.
Right.
So we know the migration is coming, and that's more true today than it was probably 25 years ago.
I think there's an estimate that we're almost at 15% or 0%.
Yeah.
We can pull the numbers, Jim.
So the, yeah, so I think the state and city, yeah, that is going to accelerate.
Right.
Okay.
Theo, of course, we passed the resolution to at least start the process-
Correct.
-for 167 Franklin tonight, which is a good first step. And is there anything, next to the bridges, which I think we all can agree that that's the most pressing, pressing immediate issue, the administration building, the plaza out front, you know, certainly needs immediate attention. Is there anything we can do to, or need to do to help further facilitate that?
I would say that you're probably, we're going to ask to be on your agenda the end of July, to come forward with some hard numbers, and then at that time, I figured we could talk about some of our options. We could either use some money and pay it back, you know, we'll certainly look to your guidance on that, but we didn't, we wanted to come back to you with that information, that those hard numbers in hand, and so that's, we're already planning on being on your agenda the end of July.
But the process from the bidding standpoint of moving forward-
Yes. Get that hard number.
Potentially to be in a position in July to make movement, to get that getting built, but we'll see what we can-
Our hope is to have it done before the holiday.
Following up on that, bridge work, is that continuing also?
Yes. Engineering's been let, and the bid, you know, they're moving on engineering these right now as we speak. So I think we'll have a little more time on that, but as soon as we get some hard numbers on that, we'll be right back in here again, talking to you about that too, if we need to bridge the gap, so to speak.
Well, it would be the timeframe, moving forward, like to start the construction on the North County complex.
We-
Plans.
Right now, we would need to start move, actually moving into the space planning itself, kind of finalizing that, and we'll be talking to the judges and the courts and everybody else, but, I mean-
Early next year?
I would hope.
If not sooner?
I would hope. We just don't know how long, just don't know how long the space planning part of it will take, because we're dealing with a lot of different entities and-
It's difficult to deal with the prosecutors, but, I mean, they're all one-off, they're not under one goal.
Plus, these judges are retiring, like, going out of style.
Right.
I say good morning, I find out they're retired by the afternoon.
Did he stop in India, Roger?
Well, at the end of the day, they're lawyers, and you know what they're like dealing with.
Lawyer, yeah.
That's true.
You're talking about three new courts?
Two.
You said two.
Maybe one in-
One in North County and one here.
Oh, I thought you said there was maybe two.
No, just one.
Not to be-
There would be no, there's no current plan for a courtroom in that old jail building.
Okay.
It would just be, if we could find the space in the current downtown courthouse, if we could find a place to put one in there.
Yeah, we have magistrates that circle around, we have the drug court, the veterans court, you know, a lot of activity there, and we want to make sure that we keep those courts moving smoothly and in the right direction, so this is-
The Expo Center, Jeff, if we, because the Fair Board is separate from us, have they, are they up to speed on what would be done out there?
They, they, we have not met with the Fair Board yet, just from the fact that we wanted to get past this day first. There's, you know, we have the Board of Commissioners, the county has a lease with the Expo or Fair Board. That's something I think that we, you know, once we get moving on this, that would be something that we would want to sit down and take a holistic look at that entire thing, and it's a pretty long, it's an old lease, maybe if they're receptive to it, maybe they're not, but, you know, we have a very good working relationship with them now, coming off the animal shelter. That all has worked to everyone's advantage there, so we don't, we don't feel too bad about sitting down with the Fair Board and trying to strike an agreement. They're pretty reasonable folks, and I'm sure they welcome this upgrade as well, too, so I hope I answered your question.
Anything else, Jeff?
Any other, any other Council members at this point?
Yeah, it's, it's refreshing to hear the plan. It's obvious that it's a comprehensive plan, very disciplined review of what the needs are in the county, and not ones, and that's, and that's clearly demonstrated throughout the different projects, you know, that you've presented. So I congratulate you on that, and also the time and effort that went into preparing the plan. It's, as Jim may have mentioned, it's historic, really, to have such a, such a review. So I also appreciate the collaborative effort that the Commissioners have had in this project. It's obvious that the Commissioners' office is all-in on this plan, and to bring us along with you, and for all of us to work in a collaborative effort to do what's necessary for the people of Porter County is something I think we all feel good about and look forward to. So I thank you very much for that.
Well said. Needs not once.
Needs not once.
Thank you.
First things first.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, yeah, yeah. We'll take it. Yeah. I tried that. My wife's too obvious. I don't want to lose that time. You want me to move on? I have no idea.
Nope. Okay. Anybody need a recess?
Let's roll, man, knock it out.
Okay.
Hey, can I have one here, Werther? I was going to ask Dan, I know old John loves him.
He has tried to get us all those people, I think.
You know, I do not like them.
I didn't say that. I said, "Old John." We're going to move through this fast, I think.
Yeah, we are. That's certainly the plan.
Mike, I make a motion that we approve the additional $16,250 to $39.50 contractual services.
Can I borrow to that if I could, Dan? I have to jump just out of order a little bit, and have Mr. Lung come up.
I didn't know we were going to do that first, so I need to rest.
And we'd like to talk about Porter Hospital tax abatement, CF1 form. Okay. Good evening, Mr. Lung, how are you?
Wonderful, how about yourself?
We appreciate your patience, and you're getting the opportunity to hear what the grand plan is for Porter County and what the Commissioners are working on, so you get the kind of a firsthand, bird's-eye view of the inner workings of how that, how that works. So we appreciate you being here tonight. This is a, an annual review that we do, and I don't know who would be best prepared to explain that. I guess, Vicki, would you be the person that could explain the purpose for the form and what we need to do here?
Are you ready?
Good.
Okay, this is an annual filing by any company that holds a tax abatement. You are responsible for the review of the CF1, because the county council was the designating body that granted the abatement to Porter Hospital. And so this is an annual filing that says basically that you are in compliance with your statement of benefits. Now, the statement of benefits was approved when the abatements were first approved a few years ago, and that spoke to the number of jobs that would be created and how much investment the hospital will make.
And as we look at this report, it's clear to me that they are in compliance with the, with the requirements and so forth?
Mr. Mary is saying he did.
That is technically up to you to decide. The designating body legally is the one to determine if they are in compliance, and my role as county auditor is-
More jobs, more salary.
...to file the form on time and properly fill out.
Okay.
I can tell you that they filed on time, and it is properly filled out.
And I'll defer to Attorney Harper perhaps to take a closer look at that, to acknowledge.
President and Jess and I have looked at it, and the numbers are in order, clearly. There's a certification there that they've filled it out accurately, and we know they have, so certainly, based on the form, they are in compliance.
Can I get a motion for approval?
I make a motion, if we approve.
I second.
Motion on the floor that has a second to approve Porter Hospital tax abatement, CF1 form as presented. Any, any questions, any discussion?
Maybe it's relevant, maybe, are there any appeals in the process right now?
Appeals for-
Value, does value, or?
Uh, no, no. There were some historic ones, but that all went away a year or two ago.
You guys are pretty happy with the current value, right?
Unofficially, I'd say yes, I'd be to sit down and view. I'd like to say no.
I'm glad.
See, it's set value, at least for the real estate portion, were sort of negotiated between the hospital and the county, and so we already know what the real estate AVs are going to be for the next, for the life of the abatement.
Any additional questions for the session? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Councilmember Bozick.
Yes.
Councilmember Reavis.
Yes.
Councilmember Jessen.
Yes.
Councilmember Witten.
Abstained.
Councilmember Conover.
Yes.
And Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
Sixty-one million, this one is-
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yep. I have a motion on the floor, Mr. Chairman. Motion on the floor that has a second, uh, to the hospital interest, sixteen thousand, two fifty to go to contractual services, uh, to pay the Capital Cities first quarter invoice. Any discussion?
Yes, so as we move forward, now, right now, we have this coming out of the hospital interest fund, where this goes back to my comments, that we need to be creating a budget at the foundation level to accommodate these payments and to accommodate any other things that we're gonna be expending out of the foundation earnings. Vicki, can you tell me how much money we have left in the hospital interest fund?
I can tell you or I can show you.
Both would work.
Oh, the new system?
This is hospital interest. It's, um, just over two point one million. But keep in mind, we do have appropriations still coming out of there.
So, how much of our appropriations are left to come out of there?
About one million. So, you're going to end the year with about a million dollar balance in this fund, and there's no new revenue coming in.
Right. Have we, um, and I know the answer is no, but how far away are we from getting the money from Capital Cities, the six point two million moved into, uh, the county fund? Has that happened? I know the commissioners did something.
The commissioners need to have a second reading on establishing these funds, and council may correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the foundation and/or the county needs to officially, uh, call, you know, submit the request to have the funds wired into the fund. But as soon as that fund is officially adopted, we'll set it up.
So, the ordinance that the commissioners are contemplating, that I understand has to have second reading, does it contemplate anything about the appropriations from that fund, or they're, they're still silent on that, correct?
It is just an, an ordinance establishing a fund, which is what they are requiring to do.
Because at some point, we need to contemplate, and this is just sort of as we're looking forward, the statute that enabled the foundation, uh, and Harold can chime in here and correct me if I'm wrong.
Or tell me I'm right if I am.
Uh, that, uh, the earnings from the foundation, the foundation has, there's some discretion in the foundation as to whether or not the up to five percent comes into the county. Is that correct, Harold? I think the foundation, if the foundation wanted to say none, none of the money is coming into the county, it could. Now, we're seven out of ten on the foundation, and we doubt very seriously we'd do that. But whatever mechanism, whatever budget, whatever ordinance we put in place that is going to govern how that money flows needs to contemplate, contemplate a budget and probably how it's appropriated.
And...
Because the council has to appropriate by statute.
And I would agree with that, and I, and you and I have talked about that, and, and President Justin and I have talked about that. The enabling statute for the foundation allows for the foundation to transfer or spend the money less than the five percent. So, it's at the discretion of the foundation. Once the money, though, is in the, in the county treasury, though, the council has the right to appropriate and has, and, and so I, certainly, that is a discussion that needs to, to be had.
And I, and the reason I say this, because I don't believe I'll be here tomorrow, because as I indicated, I can't be, I had to move my stuff from tonight to tomorrow. Uh, one thing that we need to be discussing is, um, how, that, that budget, what we're going to do, you know, is the foundation going to, say, appropriate just three point five million to the county every year to accommodate that which we're budgeting against, you know, the hospital, uh, or the current hospital interest stuff, the sheriff's pension, that sort of thing. And then the rest stays in the foundation, or are we going to be bonding against it? And if we do bond against it, we better have a contingency plan for the money. Uh, and then, of course, we have to budget for the Capital Cities and any other expenditures that may come out of that foundation fund. Operations for the foundation, for example, if we have to hire people.
And, and I, I, and President Justin and I have talked about this, and I, I would agree, because once that money is moved and, uh, by the foundation, then the council has the right and, and obligation to appropriate that. And so, to think about that before that money is sent to the county, I think, is important.
That's it for me. Thanks.
I mean, I think we're, we really have to have some, a lot of discussions on this with what the commissioners just presented, because as Dan, you know, prefaced the whole thing was, we're looking at really using, what, three point five million dollars at the end of the day to operate, government off of, of that revenue? Then you add a bond to that, that's...
Close, mate.
It's, what, five point two million dollars? That, and what are we bringing in?
Probably, honestly, the one point seven's probably a shade low a year. It's probably a little closer to one nine two million. So, we're, if we're gonna do the bond, it's, it's...
Five million dollars we're spending out of the, 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 the foundation revenue every year, and what are we bringing in, you're saying? I mean, right there.
Last year, we had a, and we've had a strong...
There was no room for...
We've had a strong, you'll find out tomorrow, we've had a strong year so far this year again. So, we're, we're not in, we're not in harm's way. We are still doing quite well. We had a remarkable first quarter here, and our second quarter's looking pretty good too. So, we're not, we're not in trouble now, but I think we do need, and, and it wasn't an issue if we were gonna say something like, "We're gonna appropriate out of the foundation budget, three point five million for operations and another two million, we're gonna budget for capital projects a year." We had a bad year, the money wasn't there. And when we first created this foundation, the thought was we were gonna budget in arrears, meaning that we got six point two from last year. When we passed our budget, we know we have six point two million to spend. And then the next year, by the time we got to budgets, we would know what was coming in in March. We'd never have a potential shortfall. We'd always know what our money was before we spent it. Bonding takes us in a different direction. And then not saying it's the wrong direction, but it's definitely not the direction that was anticipated at the beginning. But again, we've got some needs here that need to be addressed, and we need to change direction. But as we do that, there are, there are some potential pitfalls that we have to anticipate and plan for.
I mean, unless, I mean, have you guys had other discussions? I mean, I, I don't think those are false numbers. I mean, we're, we're gonna need three point five out of that, and we bond out of that. We're, we're spending everything that's coming into the, the foundation that we're earning, everything we're earning, coming in every year. So, if...
One bad year.
One bad year, we're, we're, we're into principal. We're into principal. So, and we really have to have some serious discussion on, you know, this thirty million dollar bond and...
Yeah, maybe some of the thought would be if we, as we talk to the commissioners and work through this, we do have some money. I mean, maybe we do some of these capital projects on the downstroke and make, and float a lesser bond. I mean, there are things we can do, but, but we just have to, as, as we're looking at this, we really do have to plan for our contingencies and make sure that we, we're, we're, we're ahead of the game.
So, yes, what do we have left, Vicki, in principal, in the county?
That is, that, what's up to the ten million from the hospital principal?
That the county holds.
The proceeds.
About six point, six million.
Yeah, six million, and you'll think we'll have a million left in hospital interest the county holds.
Yeah. It's not seven, it's not just Vicki's seven.
It's, I mean, there's a year of reserves right there, you know, if we're spending, a little more, obviously, if we're spending over five million a year out of the revenue.
And, and again, as you may recall, the, not to beat a dead horse, but we chose an accrual method that has great potential gain for our earnings, uh, but it also has the potential for a zero year. I mean, it does. We just have to anticipate that and make sure we're, we're ready if it happens.
And I know people have talked about, "I, I don't want any of that revenue being spent on operations." But we're, we're way past that. So, you know, I hope, I hope that's a reality for everybody now, where, you know, when we say, when they say, "No new taxes", that's, we're, we're gonna eat up every bit of that revenue that's coming into the foundation now. But when we say, "That foundation board has to prove what comes in," I hope all ten of us realize it's all of it. You know, otherwise, we're in trouble.
Okay, any other discussion? If not, uh, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bozick.
Yes.
Councilmember Rebus.
Yes.
Councilmember Justin.
Yes.
Councilmember Witten.
Yes.
Councilmember Conover.
Yes.
Councilmember Grant.
Yes.
And Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Seven to zero.
Okay. General Courts.
I make a margin of error, the additional for the grant money, two thousand fifty to thirty-one ten, excuse me, thirty-one seventy, chairman.
Motion on the floor that has a couple of seconds for the two thousand fifty to thirty-one seventy. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Rebus.
Yes.
Councilmember Justin.
Yes.
Councilmember Witten.
Yes.
Councilmember Conover.
Yes.
Councilmember Grant.
Yes.
Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
And Councilmember Bozick.
Yes.
Seven to zero.
Superior Court, one.
I make a motion to approve the ten bucks.
Second.
Motion on the floor that has a second to approve the ten dollar transfer. Any discussion?
Well...
What did they just say, man?
What? I don't know.
You're gonna pounce on that ten bucks.
All, all those in favor...
Wait a minute, I think that ten dollars was because Dan was in there trying those robes on.
No, no, that train is all about the station.
Got a cigar ass.
All my hopes and dreams are dashed.
Yeah, he's got his own at home.
All those, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Highway Department.
I make a motion to approve the seven hundred fifty thousand for paving shortfall until we receive the CCMG grant. Gotta get those roads paved.
Motion on the floor that has a second for the seven hundred fifty thousand transfer, or additional, uh, twenty-three sixty-two by two minutes, uh, to put this out there in advance of getting the money back from the CCMG grant.
Do we have any, uh, big paving projects coming up here?
Yeah, we're still paving right now. About thirty, about thirty-three miles this year.
I know we paved a little bit along a hundred south, uh, between five hundred and six hundred. Is there any, uh, any plans to pave any further west or east?
We're hoping to pave all the way to six, uh, six seventy-five.
Okay.
But we're waiting on Springwood, that entrance. There's a paving called, we're gonna fix first before we pave it.
Okay, all right, I got you.
Good job.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I was almost late because of that. And that's a good thing, thank you. You paved nine hundred today, and that's amazing. I actually thought I was in the movie Cars driving down that road, it felt so good, but it was...
We had to pare that to try to keep it from...
That was, that was, and you guys, uh, working through the rain and stuff, you did a great job out there. Really appreciate it.
Any other, any other discussion? Now, thirty-three miles, uh, as compared to previous year, just as a, as a confirmation?
Uh, we're a few miles ahead of last year. We're also gonna do probably twenty-five, took, took a few miles, and then we're gonna do some crack seal, which we have not done in a few years.
Is thirty-three a special event, one?
Yeah, probably. Probably last year, I could say, it was probably twenty-seven, twenty-eight miles.
Any additional discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Justin.
Yes.
Councilmember Witten.
Yes.
Councilmember Conover.
Yes.
Councilmember Grant.
Yes.
Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Councilmember Bozick.
Yes.
And Councilmember Rebus.
Yes.
Seven to zero.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Great job out there, good.
Animal shelter.
How goes the new shelter?
We had a grand opening Saturday, and, uh, probably about three hundred people came through the shelter.
I saw the health department did something over there, is that right?
Uh, yeah, they did a donation drive for us.
Okay.
Yeah, which was very nice.
And they were also adopting at the same time.
Yes, we were doing it all.
Did you guys clean it, clean it out?
No.
On the doctor?
That would've been nice.
Before, um, can I ask you, quick, so our animal, our, our dog population, somebody actually emailed me and asked if we ever have, every time they've been up there, all of our dogs have been pit or pit mix. Now, I, I don't have a problem with pits, but she asked me, "Is there ever dogs?" Because every time she's been there, it's been all pit. Do we get other dogs in and...
Oh, yeah.
I mean, are we still giving...
But they go out very quickly.
Are we still giving some to paws? Are we still giving...
Um, not as, not like we used to. We are keeping, um, a lot more of the animals and getting them adopted out from the shelter instead of going to rescues.
How much of our, how much do you think we're giving out to rescues now? Dogs, right?
Maybe one a week.
And how, who deter, is it that the dogs we determined to be non-adoptable, or is it the dogs they think are most adoptable?
No, right now, it's dogs who need, um, like, a foster home, who aren't readily adoptable from the shelter. We don't have the ability to get them in a foster home. We don't have a lot of fosters.
Right.
Um, so if I think that the dog is not adoptable as it is behaviorally in the shelter as it is, or medically too, um, I will send it out to a rescue at that point. But any other dog that's doing fine, we're, we're keeping those now and adopting them ourselves.
The rescue, does it put them down, or is it...
No, no, they, uh, most rescues are foster-based.
Okay.
So, they actually take the dog and put it into a home, so they have more time to spend with the dog to rehabilitate it. Yeah.
I make a motion to approve the additional in the one forty-four.
Second.
Motion on the floor has a second to approve the additional as well as the one forty-four. Any discussion?
Thank you for everything you do in there. I still haven't seen that ten-year contract.
All right, one, one thing, Tony, I was impressed with. I know you had a Facebook fundraising initiative on beds.
We did.
And I was impressed with the, uh, creative initiative, I guess, of that, and also the success of it. Why don't you explain that a little bit?
We, um, Coranda Beds, what they are, is they're beds that keep the dogs up off the floor. And it's just be great to have them in our new shelter, and we thought we're gonna ask for some of those on Facebook. Um, so Kurt put it on Facebook for us, and within six hours, we had a hundred dog beds purchased for us that will be delivered to the shelter this week.
Purchased at a reduced price.
At a reduced price, um, through Coranda themselves. They actually, they do that for shelters, so they actually, I think they, uh, kicked in probably over a thousand dollars, you know, of, of discounts that they gave to the people who ordered the beds through them. So, fantastic.
So, all, so all the county animal control is now gonna be out of the shelter, is that correct?
Yes.
But not portage, correct?
Not portage. Portage is still doing their own animal.
Are they the only municipality doing their own animal control?
Yes.
Okay.
Is there a discussion?
Do we, Dan, I guess, I'll go ahead. I just had a question. Are we, do we get money from every municipality for animal control, and are they paying? Because there was rumors, I was hearing, that some of the municipalities were not paying.
They're paying.
Do we get a report on that? How does that work?
They are paying.
They are, okay.
Yeah.
Jeremy?
It's billed by the commissioners and it's coming along.
Yeah, it is.
We can get you a report.
I'd be interested to see it, to see what the towns, each municipality is paying, if that's okay.
Jeremy, that relationship with portage, animal control, and the county, I mean, that...
It's going well.
Going well.
Yep, yep. There's, I mean, you know, there's some new things going on for them and for us with them, so, but it's working out.
Have they been training animals now?
Yep, mhm. Yep, yep. They took in a hoarding case for nine Pomeranians, and, you know, it's going fine.
Right.
Additional discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmembers, this.
Yes.
Councilmember Conover.
Yes.
Councilmember Grant.
Yes.
Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Councilmember Bozick.
Yes.
Councilmember Rebus.
Yes.
And Councilmember Justin.
Yes.
Seven to zero.
Thank you.
Emergency management.
I'll make a motion for the hundred eighty-dollar transfer.
Second. Second.
Uh, motion on the floor that has a second for the hundred eighty-dollar transfer. Uh, any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Sure.
Hi, guys.
How are you doing?
How are you, sir?
I'll make a motion for the two, I think, all animal control related, right?
Yeah, that fund is going...
Right. Make motion.
Okay, motion on the floor that has a second, that's for the first, uh, first two.
I assume that includes the one forty-four as well, Jeremy?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, any, uh, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Conover?
Yes.
Councilmember Graham?
Yes.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bozick?
Yes.
Councilmember Reva?
Yes.
Councilmember Justin?
Yes.
And Councilmember Vic.
Yes.
Motion to approve the transfer, fifteen thousand.
Second. Motion on the floor that has a second for the fire, firearm, firearms fund transfer, fifteen thousand dollars. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Motion to approve the thirty thousand dollar transfer.
Second.
Motion on the floor that has a second to approve the, uh, thirty thousand dollar salaries to overtime. Any discussion?
How many do you want on overtime out there? I mean, we, we run higher on our overtime cost than typically?
Jail, yeah.
Jails, tough.
Conover, we just lost four. We've been a lot more than half, we hire two a day, we can't hire two more, and so, you know.
Were the four longer-term folks, or is anybody...
One of them was longer, pretty long-term, and so that's like thirteen thousand, so, so...
And we start training all, all the way back over to home.
Their bodies aren't usable until they go to the frame, and then you put them up there.
You see any of this coming? I mean, you know that they're going to be re...
Uh, not often.
Leaving, or...
No.
It's kind of a... I don't think they find what it's on.
I mean, part of it is, part of it is Pratt, um, part of it is who we hire. We're, we're our own worst enemies. We hire good, young guys and, uh, and girls, and, um, we know they're not going to stay long, but they do a real good job while they stay and they leave, you know, the state bleeds hires...
So Pratt's still getting...
Pratt gets them. Um, and you can't, can I agree that?
Yeah.
We can't compete against that. But, I mean, Michigan City's hiring our guys, or, I mean, all the police departments in the region go to, they go through us. I mean, we're their training grounds, but it's still better than, on the other, the other alternative of hiring, um, you know, less quality people, so. Like the people we just interviewed this last week, I mean, they came, a couple of guys just came back from Afghanistan. We got guys that are just graduating college. I mean, we're, you know, we're, we've got the cream of the crop, I think. But, the bad side is that we lose them. Still the best way to do it.
Do we get a lot of jailers that go to become sheriff's deputies after that? Or is it the other way around, or...
I'd say almost everyone we've hired since I've been back this time has come from the jail. Except for one guy that was from Chicago, but he was a jailer. So that, it's almost every one of them, wow.
Thank you.
Any, any additional discussion?
Drug unit running pretty good, Sheriff?
It's awesome.
Thank you.
Going real good. Okay, any additional discussion? See none, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Motion to approve the additional, twelve, five, thirty-five, fifty-eight.
Second.
Motion on the floor that has a second to approve the, uh, twelve, five, thirty-five, fifty-eight, uh, to data processing equipment. Any discussion? See none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Graham?
Yes.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bozick?
Yes.
Councilmember Reva?
Yes.
Councilmember Justin?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitten?
Yes.
And Councilmember Conover?
Yes.
Sheriff, I didn't want to bring it up, put you on the spot with commissioners. But, your thoughts on moving nine-one-one to a different building?
You put me on the spot now, though.
Well, the room's empty. Just you and I.
Live stream?
I, I just think that, um, they, they probably need to talk to us before they make that move. I mean, I think there's a lot of merit for it, to be over their suffered. Think that the one hurdle they're going to have to overcome, and I'm sure they are aware of it, is how much it's going to cost. But, you know, I mean, if, if they can, if they can keep it within their budget, it's, they'd give us, it'd be nice for us to have a big, have that room available.
What would you do with that, or say?
Well, there's a couple, um, ideas. One would be to move the drug unit over, back, as one, as an option, uh, because we'd have that whole, that whole area.
That's currently leased, stays, is that right? The drug unit?
Yes.
Yes, we're, yeah, the height of pace for it. The original concept, the original thought when we were building this building, the, the jail, was to have a separate, um, standalone nine-one-one. I mean, it was Carmichael talked about it, um, but I think we just crossed prohibitive at the time. So, I mean, it's, most, most jurisdictions, the, the nine-one-one is separate, so...
So it's worthy of discussion?
Well, I think it's definitely worthy.
Would there still be room, Sheriff, to house a secondary station in the jail over there? Like a repeater or something, you know, if the other one was disabled?
Well, I think that'd be something that they probably should discuss.
Because the county, other counties have got situations like that, and I know Lake County just went through that when they had the issue over at the county building.
So have they discussed this with you?
But they haven't yet, but I'm sure they will.
Well, I know, as far as the question about living within its budget, that's going to be something we could decide, so...
Right, right. I mean, I think it's definitely should be, it has a lot of merit, to move the nine-one-one separate.
Alright, thank you.
Uh, next, Porter County Sheriff's Merrick Ward. Want to comment on that? Yeah, if you would. Uh, we've met with our, you know, our pension committee and our, our advisor, thought it would, um, our plan would not affect the plan, um, at all, but to, to, but to make it more fair to include beneficiaries. So if an officer would die, that, that, uh, because right now, if it's, if it's not spelled out, um, the spouse, it's, it's with the spouse, but then the beneficiary, it's, so we, we think it's, it would make our plan more fair, um, and it not impact the plan.
I, I guess I have a, then I haven't really looked at this in great detail, but I mean, it just seems to me that if we're adding a potential, uh, recipient to benefits, how is that actuarially neutral? Or actually, unless they're...
It just seems to me that either the actuarial, he's doing his study, is including them now, or he's anticipating that to be never.
Well, they've looked at, they looked at through the actuarial, um, Chris Diltz has looked through the actuary on this, and they, they say, um, the people that were even at the meeting said it would not impact it at all, so...
I mean, I...
If, if, just because it's a death benefit, I mean, it's, so if the officer dies, then the pension, if he doesn't have a spouse, and if he's not married, or she's not married, then it just goes right back, nobody gets it.
What about children?
That's what, that's what the...
Right.
Oh, it doesn't do it right now?
Yeah, divorcee, then they have kids.
Well, that's not fair at all.
But then you would like their, their pension be able to be benef, you know, their kids to be the beneficiaries.
So it wouldn't impact the actuarial, but it would be fair that they would get the mon, somebody would get the money.
So it can't poss, yeah, the question, I mean, I'm, it may be a minimal impact, but in the, the, uh, stuff that we were given, it says it's, it's neutral, and that, that just doesn't seem to make sense.
The actuary already assumes that every, every pension is going to be going to somebody. The person who owns the spouse.
So why, it's, my question is, why is the actuarial doing that?
Yeah, he can't be assuming that if that's not reality. It doesn't seem right, but I think what you're saying, I can't believe that it doesn't go down to the...
Sounds like they're saving money.
Yeah, and, and maybe, and maybe the actuarial is assuming, when they're doing their actuarial study, that there's a potential for everybody to get married, there's a potential for everybody, you know, so...
I'm going to put it...
We better, we better put that in there. But, it just doesn't, it just doesn't make sense to me.
Right now, you don't have a beneficiary designation that they can fill in and put, I, I don't, you know what? My, my favorite son's getting all my money, not my wife, or not my bratty daughter, it, it's...
You're recording.
Oh, anyway, sorry. Um, really, so that you can't designate, it automatically is a spouse period, so...
Well, that's what I mean, there's, yeah, but there's some pension laws to talk about.
So doesn't, I can't even put my, my uncle or my nephew?
Your spouse has benefits.
That's wrong.
Your spouse has pension benefits under...
Yeah, that's wrong.
So, yeah.
Sheriff, Sheriff, can you, can you speak to, uh, it looks like the pension plan itself was started in nineteen seventy, the original adoption of it? Um, and then it was amended or restated in thirteen, and then there was a third amendment on the fifteenth, in January of two thousand fifteen, and now, of course, this proposal is a fourth amendment. Uh, can you speak to why that wasn't part of it originally? I mean, why, how was that missed? Well, I'm... Or why was it missed? I don't know. The fifteen, um, I'm not really sure. You were here in January of fifteen, I don't know. I don't know what they were thinking up back in nineteen seventy. Um, and we didn't have Chris Diltz in seventy, so, and he came on in around two thousand two.
I am surprised too that the sheriffs, previous sheriffs haven't complained about it, because it just seems fair to me that you're able to, to leave it to your kids, or whatever.
Yeah.
You know, if your wife isn't caring around.
Maybe we haven't faced the issue. Yeah, I think that it's, you know, the pension committee, we meet and we discuss, like, there are different things that are going to be good for the officers in the long run, right? So now we're at the point, we actually have a couple of policemen that are not married, that are, are up in years of service. And if somewhere happens to them tonight or tomorrow, they lose their pension, they have little... That's a societal change, we really haven't faced that, because it's a societal change. Well, the typical, I'm all, a police officer was married, couple of kids.
And I don't think those ever, to answer your question, I don't think it was ever discussed.
No, I would agree, I probably was never...
So what, then, would that, the designated beneficiary receive, that, you know, how much of that pension?
It would depend on whether it's a pension.
So like now, if, if you add the, your spouse to your pension, the amount that you'd get is lower each month. So I would imagine it's going to be, you know, it'd have to be something to that effect, you know, or if you add this on, and, maybe I don't have that answer.
Do, do you, can we get Chris Diltz here? I, I guess I have some questions, and I, I do, and I...
Yeah, and I talked to him, right, or somebody. Tried to answer some of the questions that I even had about it, uh, but that was the thing that he brought back, is that since the actuary already assumes that everybody's going to get the pension, or is going to lose the pension, then that doesn't affect the contribution. I think that's what we kind of talked about, is that you guys worrying about, are we going to have to contribute more because we have the benefits? And there is no, there is no initial cost.
What if I...
Yeah, but then my obvious question would be, why are you, why are you assuming that as an actuarial, if that's not actually reality?
But that's what the actuarial is saying.
What, because they're assuming the worst, right? That everybody's going to get the pension.
Right, so then we hear, but then we hear along that vein, that if we change the vest, the years of vesting, it's minimal. But if we're, if we're, if the actuarial is truly assuming the worst, and everybody, when they re, what is it, seven years that they vest? What is it, ten, seven, what is it?
Seven.
So everybody is going to potentially vest at seven years. If we're assuming the worst, then that may not actually be reality. And so, then the question is, if, how can that possibly be? If we are truly as an actuarial, assuming the worst-case scenario, it's vesting at seven, how is changing the vesting, because what I'd suggested before, as you know, was, change the years of, of to vest, and whatever we save in the, in the plan, give it as a raise to the officers to entice them to stay longer.
It was only like four thousand dollars.
Yeah, I don't believe that. I find that hard to believe. I mean, I could be wrong, but I find that hard to believe. If we're true, unless he's not assuming the worst. That's, that, that's the questions I have.
Is it possible to bring him here?
Yeah. I'm interested if, if an officer passes before he retires, what happens to that money? He doesn't get anything. Well, his spouse, if he, if he, if he dies, passes a year before retirement, puts thirty-five years in the force, and he dies a year before retirement, does he receive anything? What benefits?
Now, that's for an unmarried officer, correct? If he was married...
I'm asking married.
Even married, this, this includes a spouse as part of it. If he didn't have a, a spouse on his pension plan, then it goes away.
But if he has a spouse on, and he dies a year before he retires?
Then she...
Does she receive some?
She, if he didn't have a plan, she don't get it.
She's on, she's on.
It's up to him to put her... Okay.
So if she receives something, then if...
Certainly she's not excluded. Knowing that is...
Yeah, if, if he just doesn't want to...
Then why does he really...
I mean, my, he's such a, with my, he's such a negligible, small amount, it may not be a thing, but I'm just curious about that. I mean, it, it seems fair, and we just try to, you know...
So is this something we would want to take up at the next meeting, if it's possible to bring the...
Mr. Diltz here?
Mr. Diltz here?
During the next meeting, will we still be able to call it off?
Yeah. Just tape.
We'll bring him next month.
Is this something that needs to be done sooner? I mean...
I think one.
Every day, you know, change.
Yeah, I mean, that's...
There's a day to change.
It doesn't change the contribution at all, I mean, if we vote yes on now.
Yeah, but I'm not ready to vote yes on it now, until I ask my questions of the actuarial. So I, I understand what you're saying. I know I've read this business of actuarial in neutral, which is probably true, but I just don't, it doesn't make sense to me.
I, I got some questions too, Dan, but I, I don't, I don't think we should put it off another day, because what hap, I mean, we're, we're leaving, we're leaving somebody out that could be a beneficiary. I mean, they, they have a right to that.
Yeah.
Somebody's, somebody has a right to that. An officer works his life and, you know, puts his life on the line. He has a benefit for, for him to pass and not have a life, and that, for just, just to go away isn't right. I mean, he's got an earned benefit there, somebody should receive it.
Especially if he likes that, of course.
Yeah.
That's, yeah.
But, if there's things that we need some additional answers on, or have some additional questions, it would make sense to go through that process before we make a final decision. It's something that some people may not be comfortable with.
Listen, I just have questions, but if we, if this body wants to move forward, fine, I'm, I'm not going to, no, I just, I just have more questions.
I made a motion to approve the amendment.
I second it.
Motion on the floor that has a second to approve the fourth, uh, the fourth amendment to the Porter County Police Retirement Plan. Any additional discussion?
No, just that we can have the actuarial here at the meeting, and the plan, you know, it's been piecemealed for a while, and we probably should discuss the plan, too.
And it sounds like you'd be in agreement to bring him here at the next meeting, or...
Okay, thank you.
Any additional, uh, comments, questions? Okay, uh, roll call, please.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bozick?
Yes.
Councilmember Reva?
Yes.
Councilmember Justin?
Yes.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Conover?
Yes.
And Councilmember Graham?
Yes.
And can we, before that, you send us a copy of the plan?
I'll get with you before, and I'll get your answers.
And I'd like, and I'd like, here's what I'd like to know, here's what I'd like to know. I'd like to know what the actuarial report says, changing our vesting from seven years to ten years, seven years to fifteen years, and seven years to twenty. Not that I'm saying we should go to twenty years, but if we can save a lot of money and put it back into pay, every penny of it back into pay, that's what I want to see happening here. I don't want to take benefits away from guys, I want to put money back in their pocket.
I would agree with that a hundred percent.
I mean, that's, that's the worth these folks are staying with.
Because I think we can definitely up the salary at some point.
Yeah, man, we need to give these guys more raises.
Alright, sounds good.
Thank you.
Sheriff, don't argue that one.
Have a good night, guys.
Okay, um, Madam Auditor, can we have a second reading, please?
Yes, we're determined that it is not necessary to appropriate more money than was appropriate in the annual budget. Therefore, the advantage developed by Porter County Council, Porter County Department, the following additional funds of money are hereby appropriated out of the community, and for the purpose of providing, such that the laws governing the plan, general fund a total of one thousand dollars. Nature Moose, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
I'm with you. You're leaving with two dollars.
There it is! Oh!
I think that's the second rate.
Gonna cover his ass.
Any, uh, any discussions on second reading?
You gotta fix that.
Yeah.
Discussion on second reading?
Nope.
Jeremy, do you have something?
Not on second reading, neither.
Okay, uh, roll call, please.
I'm not.
That was, that's a no. Yes! And we'll take that, we'll take that reduction in the salary.
Don't ask me now.
Work it for free, cause I still-
Wait, you were enjoying it? What was the question?
Second reading.
Yes.
Uh, council member Reva.
Yes.
Uh, council member Justin.
Yes.
And council member Button.
Uh.
Council member Conover.
Yes.
Council member Graham.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Good.
And then, uh, we have covered, uh, the other matters that we have in Porter Council.
I'm gonna take a, a more.
The only, uh, thing that I'd like to raise is there was the resolution that the commissioners passed through and I don't know, uh, it's, it went down this way, does anyone have that? Great, okay, guys, I just wanna make sure we get that back. Is that, has everybody signed it?
I believe so.
Did we? Yeah.
Okay, at that-
Our office would like a copy of this, though.
Great.
We got an open message sent around, don't we?
Okay, uh, kind of a motion for Jeremy.
Wait on.
Yeah.
Dan?
With this whole possible bond proposal, I mean, are we, are we gonna just wait till they come in front of us with more numbers? I mean, there's something we're all in the, you know, I can't say we're all in agreement with, but, I mean, this is, this is gonna lock up pretty much all the money. This puts us against the wall for quite a time. I don't know, did they say how long that bond would be? I don't think they did, did they? Are we supposed to say this one again?
It's a good question.